So, welcome everyone. I'm Mike Crabtree. I'm a tax partner at Bule. Just start off with some initial housekeeping things. This is our first Zoom presentation. So hopefully, everything will go well and we won't have too many hiccups. As you come in, again, please don't show your video. Questions are all going to come through the chat box. So down at the bottom, you'll see a little, hopefully, in the footer there, a chat box, and click on that and type in your question, and we'll get through those as we go through. The team we have on today is Tom Johnson, a tax partner, Brian Olson, a tax manager, head of our state and local tax area, Eric Allen is one of our audit partners, Jeff Filler is a manager in our audit area and handles our risk analysis area, and Dustin Mitchell, who is a supervisor in our tax group. So we are the folks that are going to be presenting and fielding your questions. Again, for your questions, we're going to do those through the chatroom, and Tom will be kind of collecting those and moderating and sending those out to us throughout the presentation. So yeah, we'll get rolling. I am going to share my screen now. Hopefully, this works. All right. That looks right. We'll get going here. Okay. So, welcome everyone to our virtual town hall meeting, informing you of the latest PPP developments. The PPP, as everyone knows, has been an adventure. It's been exciting two and a half months since this came around. And right after we scheduled this presentation, the PPP world changed considerably again with the passage of the PPP Flexibility Act, and we'll talk about that and some of the things that have that have had changed and things we know and things we don't know. As we're all familiar with in this process, it's been almost more questions than answers, and sometimes answers come in gradually, and sometimes they create more questions. So how we're going to do this is I'm going to go kind of give an initial overview and timeline and history of how this has gone so far and the developments in the PPP program. And then I'm going to hand it off to Jeff Filler, who's going to talk about the forgiveness application process as it currently sits, because of course with this new law change, we're going to have some revisions to that. And then at the end, Eric Allen is going to wrap some big picture questions about the things that are still lingering out there and concerns that people have. All right, the Paycheck Protection Program, the CARES Act, signed into law March 27th in response to the coronavirus pandemic. The PPP part is actually two different sections of the CARES Act. Section 1102 creates the loan itself, PPP loans, specifically to be used for just four things: payroll, rent, utilities, and certain interest during a certain covered period. And one of the keys to this is that borrowers have to certify in good faith that the uncertainty of current economic conditions makes necessary the loan request to support the ongoing operations of the eligible recipient. And this has been language that we've wrestled with since the beginning, and it's been a lot of debate about, and we'll talk about more of that later. Section 1106 of the CARES Act is where we get the forgiveness of PPP loans. It's PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program. The whole idea about it is we want to incent employers to keep their people on staff instead of sending them to the unemployment roles. So in order to do that, they wanted to push out as much money as they could quickly into the economy using it shows use the banking system, which turned out to work pretty well. Well, there's different opinions on that as well. But it's supposed to be a forgivable loan, a grant, and set up as a loan. But if you get forgiveness, it essentially turns into a grant, which is kind of the purpose, funding continuing employment. In order to achieve that forgiveness, you have to document the expenditure of certain eligible expenses during that covered period. And then there are a couple limitations that we'll talk about as well on the forgivable amount that could come into play. All right. The eligible expenses for forgiveness, four big categories: payroll, rent, utilities, and interest. Payroll, using gross salaries and wages before any reductions with holdings. We're adding in health, group health benefits, retirement contributions, and the state unemployment tax that the employer pays on those salaries. That's payroll. Rent is rent on, you know, for office space, buildings or equipment. Utilities, that's what you usually think of utilities: gas, water, electric, telephone, internet, transportation. One thing that we have seen some clarity on is that that includes fuel for business vehicles in that transportation category. So that's something we want to pay attention to as well. And interest expense, in the way this is worded in the statute, it's a mortgage on a real or personal property. So we can view that as a secured loan. Like if you have a loan on a business vehicle, that would be a mortgage on that vehicle. So the interest on that should be in your interest bucket. And once we've calculated that amount of potential forgiveness, there are two thresholds or tests that we have to apply to see if we get to forgive all that amount. One of them is a employee headcount test, and the other is a salary or wage reduction test. The employee headcount test, we are comparing the average full-time equivalent employees that we have during the covered period to a particular reference period. And there are two of those that we can choose, and we can choose the one, whichever gives us the best answer, which is important. The first one is February 15th of 2019 through June 30th of 2019. And the other alternative is the first two months of 2020. So that sets our baseline. We compute our average full-time equivalent employees during that period, and then we compare the full-time equivalent employees that we have during our covered period of the loan. And if that has gone down by a certain percentage, then we lose that certain percentage of potential forgiveness amount. There is also a salary and wage reduction test that says we have to look at what we are paying our employees during our covered period and compare that to the rate that we were paying them in the first quarter of 2020. And if that has gone down more than 25% for any employee, well, any relevant employee, then that reduction amount that exceeds that 25% is also removed from our forgiveness calculation. This doesn't apply to all employees. It only applies to employees that made less than $100,000 in any given pay period in 2019. So what that means is we look at, we take every pay period in 2019 and multiply it out to see what the rate was. So if someone's pay is even throughout the year, that's not complicated. But I can envision a situation where you've got an employee that maybe their salary is 80 or 90, but on one pay period, they get a bonus. And if we multiply that out for the whole year, it would push them above 100. So that employee actually would not be taken into account in this test. And so a little complexity, of course. And in the statute, the CARES Act, there are a couple safe harbors for avoiding these two tests. And they come into play when, if you have made a reduction in either your employee headcount or salaries and wages, the window of February 15th through April 26th of 2020. If you made reductions during that time, you can, and you restore both those salaries and wages or employee headcount by, originally it was June 30th, now it's December 31st. If you make that restoration, then you don't have to, it's a safe harbor against these two reduction tests. So that is definitely something to consider for some folks. Again, that's only if you've made reductions into those things during that window of February 15th, April 26th.
All right, and Mike, this is Tom. Applause here. Just want to make sure that you know that you were cutting in and out a little bit, but I think it's gotten more now as you're closer to the computer.
Okay.
To the computer. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
The covered period is defined in both these two sections, and that has been a topic of interest. And in section 1102, which is the covered period for making the loans, that was originally ran through June 30th. Now, again, it's been pushed to December 31st in the new statute. But future guidance has come out that we still only have until June 30th to apply for PPP loans. So we have to make sure that if we are going to try to get a PPP loan, we have up until June 30th to apply. Maybe I'll take this point, just step back a little bit and talk about PPP loans in perspective. The Secretary of the Treasury, Steve Mnuchin, and the Administrator of the SBA both testified yesterday at a Senate Subcommittee. It's out on C-SPAN on the website. If you want to watch it, it's a couple hours really riveting conversation. But they talked a lot about the implementation of the PPP, and all the senators in attendance were very complimentary about how the plan has worked wonderfully, and it really did the job of getting money out into the economy. And they all acknowledged a lot of the hiccups that we've had along the way. The big picture, they seemed pretty happy about it. There's some really interesting statistics that they came out with. The SBA Administrator said that through this PPP program, the SBA put out 14 years' worth of loans in 14 days. I thought that was kind of incredible. There are a total of four and a half million loans that went out through this program. It's pretty fascinating. There is currently still 130 billion left that has gone out. I remember originally, when that first 349 billion came out in the statute, I mean, shut out the door really fast, and it was kind of a big panic to rush and get the money. And it did get used up very quickly, just a couple weeks. Then they did a second round of funding, another 310 billion. You know, that, there's still 130 billion out there. So that, but, and that might change a little bit as we now are in the world of the Paycheck Protection Program Flexibility Act, which is authored by our own Congressman. Just kind of cool. This really changed the, a lot of the rules around the PPP and expanded it in some really significant ways. But at the same time, it opened up a lot of extra questions and a lot of things that we just don't have answers for yet. The biggest thing, the biggest aspect, I think of it, is changing that covered period of when you can spend the funds and get forgiveness for them. Expanded it from eight weeks to 24 weeks, which is a really huge change because, if you remember, at the application process, you applied for the loan based on two and a half months' worth of payroll, which is just shy of 11 weeks. And then you only had eight weeks in which to spend that money to get full forgiveness. But on the forgiveness side, of course, you can add rent, utilities, interest. And so you could get, and a lot of people will get 100% forgiveness based on just the eight weeks. But a lot of businesses couldn't and can't, and especially ones that are still being closed by government orders and things like that. So this expansion from eight weeks to 24 weeks is going to make a huge, huge deal, a huge difference for a lot of people. That being said, if the eight-week period works for you, you can still elect that and choose that. And that might make sense for some, and if you've done the calculations and you've already got 100% forgiveness, why not go ahead and do it now? The rules, if the rules are what they are, and they're always changing. So if the current rules work for you, go ahead and do that. Otherwise, the 24 weeks will be the period going forward. Another big change was that time for those restoration safe harbors that I talked to before. Instead of looking at June 30th to restore your employee headcount and your salaries and wages, you have until December 31st. Another big change was that the statute itself didn't have a percentage requirement for payroll in the forgiveness process, but the SBA issued that as part of their guidance. They had set the threshold of 75%. They've said that at least 75% of the forgivable amount has to be payroll expense. And that in the PPP FA has been reduced to 60%. One question that has popped up in that is the way that the PPP FA is written, that 60% threshold reads like a cliff. Like if you don't get 60%, you don't get any forgiveness. But the guidance was just issued late last night that confirms that that's not the case. And so even if you, even if your payroll percentage is under 60%, you will still get a proportionate amount of forgiveness. Some other changes in that PPP FA. Any unforgiven amounts that remain alone, in other words, don't be converted to a grant, are now payable over five years. The original guidance had said one year. And there's also some questions to when that started. The original act had a six-month deferral, but now the payments on those loans don't start until either the SBA pays the bank that you got the loan from, the forgiven amount, if any, or 10 months after the covered period. So in other words, if my covered period ends in the middle of December, and I don't ever apply for forgiveness, I'll have to start paying that back 10 months later, middle of October 2021. In addition to that, there are two new safe harbors in this act that I think are really important and can really change the PPP landscape for a lot of businesses. One of them is a safe harbor for inability, inability to rehire workers or similarly qualified workers. What that is, is if, as a business, you had to lay off people, you tried to rehire them, and they won't come back. Maybe they got a different job, or they don't want to. If you can document that you tried to rehire them, couldn't, and then you tried to hire similarly qualified people and couldn't, then you don't have to worry about the headcount reduction test. You're potentially able to get 100% forgiveness. And a similar, different, new safe harbor is, again, if you are able to document your inability to return to the type of business levels that you had on February 15th due to government rules, shutdowns, limitations on your ability to be open, that is another safe harbor that will allow you to still get potentially 100% forgiveness, even if you don't have the same kind of employee headcount and things like that.
Mike, this might be a good spot for me to jump in and just ask you a couple of the questions that have come in so far.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of the questions are basically dealing with this page right here that we're on.
Yep, understandably.
The main question that's coming in is, do we have either eight weeks or 24 weeks? Or is there a sliding scale in there? Once we reach, you know, the 100% forgiveness, can we cut it off and then apply at that point? So can you address that a little bit for us?
Yeah, Matt, I think it really is uncertain. We're going to need guidance from the SBA on how that works. If, just looking at the statutes themselves, it looks like you've got either or. The new rule is 24 weeks, and you can make an election to use eight weeks. Those are your two options. In his talk yesterday, Secretary Mnuchin addressed that question from a senator. I can't remember which senator it was, but someone asked if, you know, so what if I've spent all my PPP funds after 12 weeks? Do I have to wait 24 to apply for forgiveness, or can I apply right then? The Secretary said, no, no, you don't have to wait. You can go ahead and apply. But thinking about the way that these tests work, you know, if I am going with the 24-week covered period, I have to analyze my average employee full-time equivalent headcount over that whole 24-week period and compare it to one of those earlier reference periods to see if I have a headcount reduction. And I don't know how you do that if you don't do the whole 24 weeks. And one thought would be is if, if one of these two new safe harbors applies to me, then I don't really care about the headcount reduction test, and I wouldn't need the whole two weeks. So maybe that will be an option. You know, if I can claim one of these safe harbors in the 24-week period, doesn't matter to me really, as long as I spend all the money, then maybe I can file at that time. It's really unclear right now. And hopefully we'll know soon, but things kind of come out in different times.
Right, so that's a lot of, we don't know the answer to the question that is being asked because people are worried about, just like you said, Mike, do I have to maintain my levels of employee for 24 weeks if I only need to get the 10 to get to forgiveness? And it's not clear, and hopefully those things will continue to come out. One of the other questions was, did the new rule, did the Flexibility Act change what non-payroll expenses qualify? And I love the one that says, can I pay my CPA for additional work? Well, I wish you could and get it forgiven, but I think the categories have stayed the same. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't see any changes to the types of expenses. And there are still a lot of open questions about what those expenses are. There's not a lot of detail and definitions in the statutes, and not a ton in the guidance yet either. I know we have some questions about what goes into group health expenses, for example. Health insurance is an obvious example, but what if I have an employer-funded HSA program or HRA or something like that? And there's a lot of uncertainty about that that we're hoping to get in additional guidance.
Great. I think maybe we'll just let you keep going, and we'll pop in with a few more questions.
Okay, great. Well, I think at this time, I'll slide it over to Jeff to talk about the forgiveness application process as we have known it, you know, knowing that it's going to change somewhat.
Thanks, Mike. So, welcome everyone. I'm Jeff Filler. I'm the Risk Advisory Manager here at Bule. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the forgiveness application, give you a bit of an idea of what it's going to look like if you haven't seen it yet. What you see here on the right of the screen is the original form that came out back on May 20th. Okay, so this is the main calculation that you see here. And so what they're having you do, and there's no reason to believe that there will be, this will be similar when the new form comes out, just modified for the new provisions. But they're having you list your payroll and non-payroll eligible expenses up here. Then they're giving an adjustment based on the full-time equivalency and salary hourly wage reductions. After that, you'll have three lines in this potential forgiveness amount, and there's going to be three areas. So you're going to have your original PPP loan amount. You'll have the modified total, and then you'll also have the payroll cost 75%, which is going to be moved to 60% requirement. And the smallest of those three lines is what your forgiveness amount is going to be if they keep this current format. So again, your eligible forgiveness amount is going to be the lesser of the original loan amount. So hopefully 100% forgiveness is what you're aiming for. The payroll costs, if you did not meet the 60% requirement, so if you were at 55%, that would reduce eligible forgiveness. And then you could also end up getting it reduced by the modified total, which would essentially be a reduction, based on a reduction in salary, hourly wages, as well as full-time employee headcount reduction. So those calculations would play into what the forgiveness amount is ultimately going to be. So if you want to go to the next slide there, Mike. So the PPP Schedule A, this schedule just kind of feeds into the main calculation on the previous page. So we have a worksheet table that is just going to list your compensation more detail. But essentially, you're going to calculate whether these wages are due by greater than 25%. If not, then you can just enter zero and not have to worry about it. You're also going to have detail on non-cash compensation payroll costs as well as compensation to owners. So again, this is just a calculation that feeds into the main table that we had on the previous page. If you want to move on to the next slide. Some detail here on the full-time employee reduction calculation. So this will relate to your comparison of the borrower's chosen reference period, as Mike had mentioned earlier, that can be one of two timeframes, that timeframe in 2019 or that two, first two months of 2020. There could be modifications based on the new, on the new changes to the PPP Flexibility Act that could change that reference period, but there should be a reference period that you will be able to compare. And again, you're going to want to choose the reference period that gives you an advantage. So if you had less employees during the first two months of 2020, for instance, rather than that period in 2019, that's the reference period you're going to want to choose because if you can avoid it, you don't want to show a reduction in FTE. So basically, that's kind of what the FTE is. So you'll have a quotient here, and if you meet the safe harbor, then you won't need to enter a quotient. You have to enter 1.0 here. And again, as Mike mentioned earlier, the, it's essentially restoration, right? So if you reduced employees, if you reduced wages, but then you brought them back. essentially restoration, right? So if you reduced employees, if you reduced wages, but then you brought them back, then you had, you're eligible for the safe harbor. You don't need to worry about FTE reduction impacting your forgivable amount. And the last area down here at the bottom, that's just emphasizing what I mentioned earlier, that you get to choose your reference period. And hopefully that'll continue to be the case, you know, when they update this form, as that provides additional flexibility. So if you want to move on to the next slide, I just wanted to reemphasize the, the main points of the forgiveness application to watch for what can lower your forgiveness amount. So three main areas that can do it. You reduce salaries and wages during the covered period by more than 25% and did not bring it back as part of the safe harbor. You reduced your workforce, did not bring that back in, in alliance with the safe harbor, or you didn't meet the 60% payroll eligibility. So if you were only at 55% or 40%, that's going to reduce your forgivable amount. So those are the three things to watch for. And again, if you have more detailed questions, we'd be happy to take them during this call, or you know, you can reach out to one of us after the meeting as well. But that's, that's kind of the highlights of the forgiveness application as it stands.
All right, Jeff, and we have a few questions about FTE and what that means. Maybe I'll just try to summarize them for you. We have a few examples of what happens if somebody was let go for cause? Does that mean that I don't have to replace that with an FTE? Another one would be somebody died during the year. Does, does that matter? The issue I believe is, is FTEs specific people or is it total number regardless of the circumstances? Maybe you could comment on that.
Yeah, so full-time employee headcount is essentially, you know, headcount. I don't know if there's an exemption for why they were let go. But what they want to make sure the intent is that you did not, you know, reduce your workforce and then did not bring them back, you know, as part of the safe harbor agreement. So if you were letting people go due to economic activity being impacted, but then you were able to bring them back as a result of the PPP loan, then you would qualify if, if you did not bring back and your, and your FTE was reduced from the, in comparison to the reference period, then that could impact the forgivable amount. But to answer your question, I'm not sure if there is a, if there's a waiver, Mike, maybe you know.
Yeah, I think, I think there was something in one of those interim final rules where they did grant an exception for, for termination with cause.
Mike, I, I agree. I saw that in an interim rule as well. So for cause for that specific purpose, then that won't impact them.
Okay, so there, so there are exceptions to, to reducing employees based on the reason why it sounds like.
And that just kind of identifies just how up in the air the actual rules are. And like Mike said, the rules are coming out yesterday. I think there were some comments out today. They are continually changing. One of the other ones is one that we've discussed already, and I don't think we have an answer for. But, you know, we went to eight weeks out of 52 weeks on 100,000, which means that each employee is limited to 15,385 in this time period. The question becomes, now are we at 24 weeks out of 52 weeks? Times 100,000 or more in the $42,000 range. Can you give us a little thought on that, Mike?
Yeah, um, technically speaking, it's not clear right now because the, the guidance, all the, the regulations that have come down from SBA all have that 15,385 number in them. But it would only make sense that that would be increased for, because the statute says we can't include salaries that exceed over, you know, salary over $100,000 per employee. For expanding the window, the, of the covered period from eight weeks to 24 weeks, we would think that we would just use that much more of that employee's salary. The regs currently say 15,385, so, and they need to be changed. I would expect that they would be because, I mean, the, the regs that came out late last night were a revision to the very first regs that came out on this. And I would imagine there's going through all the guidance and kind of updating for that PPP FA. So I would expect that that's the case. But we, we can't be sure. And, and they might throw some other wrinkles into it like they originally threw the 75% threshold in. And that was just something the SBA made up with Treasury. In, in, in the fact that the loan itself was based on only two and a half months of salaries, maybe they'll come up with some other kind of cap or limit. The statute only says $100,000. So if, if our covered period is 24 weeks, it makes sense to me that if we, 24, 50 seconds, $100,000.
Okay, and then another comment is an owner. Do owners' wages count? So maybe you could just briefly talk about that and then maybe we'll move on to Eric.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, that, and that was, that was a, an open question from the beginning. It seemed, the statute itself doesn't have any reference to that, and, and there wasn't much in the way of guidance on that. That, what we learned when we got the first forgiveness application and the regs that came out immediately after that was that they did put a cap on, on owner compensation of the owner's compensation rate in 2019. So if you had, if you had in 2019, an owner employee or, or, or a self-employed partner that, that didn't have much income in 19, you were kind of capped at that. You were stuck. I would imagine they'll have something like that, and that, or that will stay, stay as part of the, part of the deal. But as far as the 10-week or, or eight-week or 24-week part of that, we're not really sure yet. The idea of the $100,000 cap, I think, was it, it makes sense in that, you know, you don't want to, if you, if you have owner employees, you don't want them to be able to issue themselves large bonuses and then use up the, use up the PPP funds that way and get, then get forgiveness on it. I mean, so that, that 100,000 cap, I think, was enough of a limit on that potential problem. But then they did add that, that compensation of 2019 is another limit on owner employees' salaries. And then just to, uh, comment a little bit more on, on the, the testimony yesterday. You know, the, the form that Jeff was talking about here is 11 pages and it, it, the worksheets that are involved in that are potentially, you know, very, very complicated and a lot of work. And several senators were complaining to the secretary and the, the administrator of the SBA about, about this 11-page application form. And especially when the, when the initial loan application form was, you know, maybe three boxes and a bunch of places to initial. And they came out with this 11-page really complicated forgiveness application. And, and so they, the senators were leaning on them pretty hard to, to get that to simplify. The secretary did say that they're, they're planning to simplify it. And hopefully they can work, work out something that's a little less complex. The, um, one thing he did say is that because of the PPP FA has these two new safe harbors for not being able to, to restore your, to, to re-achieve your, your earlier levels of business or inability to rehire certain workers. If you can avail yourself of those safe harbors, then maybe you don't need to do all that math and you can skip a lot of that. So hopefully the, the new forgiveness application form will be somewhat simpler than, than this one. Right now it's kind of a bear.
Okay, and, and so now we've got, most of the people on the call have already received PPP loans. And we talked about the forgiveness and the question is how much do we forgive? But also what are the risks and about the audits from the SBA and the threats that came out earlier? Eric, maybe do you want to take over and address those from here?
Yeah, sure, Tom. I'll, I'll start on the, the risks. Of course, when this, when this loan program first came out and, and people could actually start applying on April 10th, there wasn't a lot of time for business owners to really think about it. I mean, it was just basically, hey, we're in a, we're in a pandemic. Looks like this is going to be a long recessionary period of time. Here's a grant program. Here's the basic qualifications. Go ahead and apply. And, and embedded within that application, Mike, I'll refer to this, the certification. And I think it's important to note that at that time and, and all subsequent frequently asked question responses, the SBA is, is kind of referred to it numerous times. And, and again, the certification, current economic uncertainty makes this loan request necessary to support the ongoing operations of the applicant. So if you could answer that truthfully, yes, I believe we have an economic uncertainty. I think, I think most applicants will be okay with that. I will get into some things that you can do to enhance your position if you are selected for review per se. Of course, at the, at the time, if you think about it, uh, you know, where were we in the world on April 10th? I mean, this pandemic was running loose, 30 million Americans unemployed. The, the market, the Dow had gone from an all-time high in, in February to roughly 30 days later, a 35% decline. So a lot of uncertainty out there. Even, even in talking with clients that were in the industry, maybe they were working with a lot of municipalities in, in construction or, or state government entities. He said, well, we're really today, I don't know that I've been impacted, but I'm not sure what it'll look like 12 to 18 months from now. And I think you're seeing that with the amount of budget deficits that localities are, are faced with. It's almost certainly to have an, an impact on, on projects that they're going to budget for and, and approve in the, in the upcoming year or year and a half or two years. Interestingly enough, the, the frequently asked questions, I think, were almost up to 50 responses now since this program started and, and people started applying on April 10th. One of those that came out, FAQ 31, on, on April 23rd, I think this was the response. The Treasury Secretary had held a press conference saying it, it was not the intent of this program to be able to support publicly-held companies that had access to capital in the marketplace. And I think he was referring specifically to, you know, restaurant chains like, like Shake Shack, which had a a little bit of a loophole in the process where they didn't have to apply affiliate rules for purpose of applications. If you were in certain hospitality, you know, hotel slash restaurant industries. And then also it came out that the LA Lakers had applied for and received funding. So it was a little bit of a, I think, a political statement by the, the Treasury Secretary. And that's, and that's where this, we first heard the term audit. And, and of course, nobody really knows what that meant. I mean, I know what an audit is, but I, you know, nobody knows what an audit is in terms of, of SBA oversight. So we, we fast forward, uh, on April 29th, the SBA comes up with FAQ 31 that basically says, uh, in regards to that press conference, it actually is going to be a review. The SBA is going to review all loans and they set a, a threshold. Any PPP loan over $2 million will be subject to, to review for forgiveness. Now, when I just, what does that mean? How, you know, my question is, how is the SBA going to functionally do that? I think, I think Mike indicated earlier that they had basically made 14 years of loans in a very short, short period of time. The, uh, the SBA lending report that, that came out said, we're at about 511 billion out of almost a $650 billion program. The threshold of loans that are greater than that 2 million range is just a little under 30,000, or 30,000 in, in quantity. So when you talk about procedurally how we've come to understand it, the applicant submits their forgiveness application, which those will be some of the early recipients. Their, their first eight weeks is up and they have begun probably to submit those to the lenders. Lenders have 60 days to approve or deny. They approve, they send it along to the SBA, which has a 90-day review period. So that's the, that's the big question. What are they actually going to do to, in, in their review? That still has not been defined exactly what that is. The SBA did come out with another FAQ on FAQ 46 on May 13 that clarified a little bit more the, the linkage between this review concept and, and the borrower's good faith certification at the time of the application. Basically saying, if you're under a $2 million loan amount, you're, you're going to be automatically considered having met that good faith certification. Now, obviously this doesn't apply to the, 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 I would know abuses and fraud that we've seen. We've seen evidence that, you know, people have applied with no companies, you know, no employees and, and obtained funds fraud, fraudulently. They've indicated that if you're above that $2 million threshold and do get subject to the review procedures, i- in the cases where the SBA ultimately denies your, your forgiveness application, that it seems to have indicated today at least that they'll say, just, just send the money back and we're not going to, you know, prosecute you, refer you to other government agencies. So that's where we're sitting today. Who knows, again, what, what their procedures will entail? I, I will say to, to reduce the impact of being denied forgiveness, I think, I think management teams ought to do a few things. Number one, really build up a file and document in, in a memo format. The things you were considering at the time of the application that, that caused you to conclude that you did have uncertainty in your business and, and you did need these proceeds to, to continue to run your operations. I mean, let's not forget here, uh, I mean, I think 99% of the companies that received these loans probably have done it in good faith. You, you continue to pay employees. You didn't, you didn't put them out on the streets. I mean, effectively you did, you did contribute to the country's ability to keep people employed and, and ultimately probably save lives in that matter. So again, I, I'd come up with a memo that maybe documents, you know, here's the reasons why did we, did we see our, our backlog fall off? We had customers call us and tell us that, you know, I, I'm only going to order 20% of what I told you in April. That's, that's something to, to think about. Are you seeing financial statement trends, AR aging, falling off, increase in bad debt expense, just things like that? And I think those aren't items you necessarily need to submit with the forgiveness application. But if you can have a file built up that the team has reviewed and thought about, in case the SBA has further questions, you'll, you'll be able to remember what you were thinking at the time versus, you know, we've seen, we've seen some commentary that you need to keep this stuff for six years. So again, as time goes, goes by, you, your, your ability to remember what you were thinking about that day will, will decrease. So those are my thoughts from a risk management standpoint. What, what borrowers can do to, to, to help their cause when it comes to forgiveness by the SBA.
Great, thank you, Eric. So I think we've got about seven or eight minutes left. There are a couple, a few questions that are general questions that might apply to, to a lot of people. I mean, as we talked through the risks and uncertainties that Eric just talked about, Jeff Filler on, on the program here, you heard from him earlier, he has a program that he's doing, documenting these expenses and to help you build that file that goes to your banker. Between your banker and if you want to contact Jeff, I mean, he'd be a great resource to help you this project done. A, a couple of questions that have come in, a lot in the news about the Bankers Association wanted to, has requested that any loan under $150,000 just be automatically forgiven and, and not even have to apply. That would be wonderful from, from, I think, everybody's angle. And I think, would anybody agree that? And I think, would anybody agree that that's just out there as a possibility and it hasn't been acted on yet?
Right, yeah, yeah, that would be great.
Okay, and the second one is the taxability of the funds. That's a very interesting topic for people. Dustin, maybe can you talk a little bit about the taxability of the income and expense that's going on here and what the possibilities are?
Yeah, yeah. So written into the CARES Act is that normally when you have a debt that's forgiven, that becomes income to you, a forgiveness to debt income. And so the CARES Act specifically says that this income, this debt forgiveness does not count as income. It's excluded. That's at the federal level. One issue we might be seeing is that states conformed to federal law, in this case, the Internal Revenue Code, in various ways. Some automatically conform. North Dakota automatically conforms, some don't, Minnesota, for example. So if a state hasn't, doesn't automatically conform to federal law, or they haven't passed a conformity bill by the time you're filing your 2020 taxes, depending on the state, that forgiveness might be income in that state. But that's an issue I'm sure will be, a lot of states have already passed laws saying, or pro regulation saying, these ones are not income to the state. So I, that's something to keep an eye on, but I think it's going to be a huge issue. One thing that cropped up though is the SBA, sorry, I, the IRS did put out a ruling that expenses that are paid for with forgiven amounts are not deductible, which kind of took a lot of people by surprise because that did the entire intent of the CARES Act, right? You know, so if the CARES Act hadn't said that these little forgiveness amounts are excluded from income, you know, I have a million dollar loan, I pay a million dollars in payroll, I get a million dollars of income, but cost offsets that. The CARES Act said, well, no, it's not a million dollars of income. Don't worry about it. But now I don't get a deduction for my, for my expenses. So you can end up in the same place at the end of the day. So hopefully we'll see a, a fix or some kind of guidance on that. Is that my information up, up to date there? Or is that something that's, that's changed?
No, I, I don't think anything's changed on it yet. The, there is a, there's a bill in the Senate to, to reverse that IRS conclusion. And I have heard that the majority of the House agrees with that concept. So it seems like that has a, a strong likelihood of being fixed in future legislation. But it requires future legislation. So we, we can't, can't count on it. We can, you can hope, hope for the best. And it, and it seems like if both sides agree that that's how it should go, then, then hopefully it will. We'll just have to wait.
Great. And there have been a number of questions that have been chatted in about the definition of full-time employees and each specific circumstance. We could be here for three days. Specific situations, I would like to encourage the people on the call that if they have questions on those, Brian Olson is on the line here. And he would be a great one to contact with some of those kind of specific questions. He's part of our technical implementation team as we've been going through the, the PPP for the last two and a half months. Couple other questions that have come in. I have employees who have been working really hard and might deserve a raise. You know, that they might be at a, a pay raise over this eight-week period of 10,000, but maybe they should get a bonus or hazard pay for the, what they've been doing. Is that allowed? And I think it's pretty clear that that is allowed. That the hazard pay and bonus pay for the employees, as long as it's not over the annualized 15,385, or the annualized 100,000 to 15,385. And of course, Mike talked earlier about that those rules might change. But I think that's okay to give people a raise. Are you aware of that, Mike?
Yeah, that, I think that was referenced in one of those interim final rules that came out along the way that, I think the SBA feels that that hundred thousand dollar cap is, is sufficient, a sufficient limitation on any potential abuse. So they recognize that, I think they even used the word hazard pay or something similar to it in, in that, yeah, you should feel, feel free to do that if, if, if that works for you. And that, that's good news because that, that is something that we, we've thought about right from the beginning. And it was only recently when they finally came out with something, giving that the green light. So.
Yeah, and I think that's a, I think the IRS are trying to be taxpayer-friendly here, but there are so many unintended consequences and everybody has a unique situation. So and, and really the first step in getting forgiveness is going to your banker and getting your banker to, to say, yes, this is a good forgiveness package and shipping it on to the SBA. And I really think that's where our team could help you and Jeff and Brian and Dustin and the whole crew could help you think through that. There was quite a time when there was a lot of threats that everyone was going to jail. I think that has subsided substantially now, and it's more about how are we actually calculating forgiveness? And especially the, the retail, restaurant, accommodation, hospitality environment has been particularly hard hit with these rules. And they are really, I think, trying to soften those up to, to benefit those industries is what I'm getting out of it. And Mike, maybe you want to make any closing comments? You're the leader of this.
For sure, yeah. I'll pick up right at that, at that spot that I think that, that specific new safe harbor in, in, in the PPP FA really lends itself to, to restaurants, saying that, you know, we're just physically incapable of getting our business activity levels up to where they were on February 15th. And in allowing that, that safe harbor to just basically let those businesses get 100% forgiveness, even though they can't meet some of those tests that were in the original legislation. Yeah, and that's, that's yet another thing, not, not to try to oversell this congressional testimony from yesterday, but a lot of the, a lot of the senators were on record saying that we, we don't want these borrowers to get put through the wringer on forgiveness. It was intended to be a grant and we want it to go out and we want it to be a manageable process. And a lot of these businesses are, businesses are that, small businesses. They don't have, rooms full of accountants to, to handle all this stuff. So I, I think they, the intention, and, and the secretary confirmed that. I mean, the intention is, is this is going to be a grant. Now with this 24-week period, it should be a lot easier for, for borrowers to get 100% forgiveness. It seems like that's what they want and, and hopefully that's how it works for everybody.
All right. As we go. Yeah. Our comment is that will the deal be made available? Does the recording be made available to people if they came in late or anything? And the answer is yes. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Yep, yep, for sure. Yeah, yeah. And we will be emailing out a, a survey that we would been asked you to complete and, and send back to us. That would be really helpful for us. Again, this is our, our first Zoom presentation, so I hope it went okay. And if you do have follow-up questions, you have the slide there. Either email any of us directly, or you can go here to learnmore@bluelegroup.com and they can forward it on to us. So more than happy to answer any questions anybody has. There's still a lot of unknowns and, and guidance is coming in all the time. So the adventure continues.
Sounds great. Thanks, everyone, for attending. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.